If you want.
Well, yeah. So if you have the.
Alright, I will call the city council pork session to order. City recorder Craigor, please take role.
Counselor Lou.
Here.
Counselor Anderson.
Here.
Mayor Snyder.
Here.
Counselor President Goodhouse.
Here.
Counselor Newt.
Here.
Alright, all please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Alright, councilor's staff have any non-agenda items?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Alright, first item on the agenda is to receive an update from Washington County Cooperative Library Services. Oh, you're all, you're all up and ready to go. Thank you for being so prepared and I'm hoping all three of you can introduce yourselves briefly to the public and to the council.
Hi, everybody. I'm Lisa Tattersall with WCCLS. I'm the Cooperative Library Services Manager and I'm excited to be here.
I'm Halsted Bernard. I'm the Tiger Library Acting Co-Director and Circulation Manager.
Hi, I'm Teresa Ferguson, the Acting Co-Director and Technical Services Manager. Thanks for having us.
Oh, and I've got the clicker. It looks like, okay, good. So today we're really here just to give you an update and an overview on what Washington County Cooperative Library Services does, how it works, some of the progress we've made with projects and initiatives in the last couple of years and then give you a look ahead to what's coming in the next couple of years. And we'll have some special, like, like local Tiger information peppered throughout as well. So just to give you guys an overview of the structure of WCCLS, we're a partnership of the county, nine cities, and three nonprofits. So what the county provides is funding for local library operations, which was nearly twenty-five million this fiscal year. We also provide the infrastructure to link libraries together and as well, we provide some centralized services. In terms of our revenue, two-thirds of our funding comes from the county's general fund. It's a transfer from the general fund. And then one-third of our funding comes from a local option levy, which goes before voters every five years. So the most recent levy was approved in twenty fifteen and it runs through June twenty twenty-one. And I'll talk more about the upcoming levy towards the end. Do you guys wanna speak to Tiger's library funding?
Sure. So according to this slide, fifty-nine percent of the Tiger Library budget comes from WCCLS funding. This is a number from fiscal year nineteen. So as you see, the Tiger Library budget is six million, two hundred and thirty-seven thousand, four hundred and twenty. And from both pool one and pool two WCCLS funds, that's three million, seven hundred and five and sixty-three. And Lisa, did you wanna speak to pool one and pool two?
I could. Pool one is basically the primary source of funds. And so with each levy cycle, which is five years, the executive board of WCCLS, WCCLS, which is advisory to the Board of Commissioners, which is ultimately our governing board, the executive board is made up of all the city managers. So Marty, in this case, is your representative there, as well as the board presidents of our nonprofit members. And they work on kind of coming up with a funding plan for those five years. So pool one is the majority of that money that gets allocated to each library and that's, it's based on county assessed value increasing at three percent or higher and it allocates a three percent increase each year to each member library. Pool two is if there's any extra revenue, if county assessed value is higher than three percent, then, and we calculate that in about November of each year. And then we, if there is any extra funds, we distribute that in January or February. So pool two is a pretty small chunk. The main part of it is pool one. So.
Real quick, is pool two calculated the same way?
Uh, in terms of how it's distributed between libraries? No, it's different. That's a great question.
Yes.
So the executive board came up with a methodology to do that and it, they took fifty percent of whatever pool two is. So half of it gets distributed by the number of locations. So it, so it would be divided by sixteen. So there's sixteen locations, thirteen members. So Tiger would get one sixteenth of that for fifty percent of it. Beaverton has two locations, so they would get two sixteenths or one eighth. The other half of pool two gets allocated by, it's relative to your proportion of your pool one allocation. So say you get, I'm pulling numbers out of the sky. I don't know what's right off the top of my head, but say your pool one is twenty-five percent. It's probably not, but say it's twenty-five percent, you would get also then twenty-five percent of the half of pool two, the other half. And then we kind of add those two together. So they try to balance out the sort of general distribution we have, but also acknowledging that if we did it by, just by that proportional percentage, sort of the smaller libraries would get hardly anything and it's almost not worth distributing. So it was kind of a way to balance that out. Does that help? Yeah. Good question. Okay. So here's just a little map of our member libraries and so you can see there's three members that have two locations each and the rest have one.
I'm sorry, I have another question. Where's the second Cedar Mill location?
Yeah, so there's Cedar Mill. Does this have a laser? Oh, yeah, there it is. Oh, yeah, you're back there. Okay, so, oh, it's not, oh, there we go. It's not showing up on the screen. No, it's not. Okay, so you see where it's Bethany at the top, like, it's almost directly, like, north of Sherwood at the very top. That's the Bethany location of Cedar Mill. And then there's Cedar Mill, Maine, which is, uh,
Just to the right.
Just to the right off of twenty-six. Yeah.
Okay, there.
Yeah, of course. Okay, and so we've got sort of an overview of the cooperative-wide statistics, sort of usage stats. And then the next slide will have some Tiger-specific ones. So we have one point seven million items in our shared collection of books, movies, music, hot air fryers, all those kinds of things. And then we have, last fiscal year, we had fifteen million searches in our catalog. We had eleven point two million checkouts countywide and one million of those were digital books. Three point seven million library visits and then over a hundred and thirty-three thousand volunteer hours contributed, which I think really speaks to that sort of community buy-in and engagement.
I was gonna point out, you kinda, you said a little bit with like the air fryers. I was at an event on Saturday night and to find out the other things you can check out, you can check out passes to go, I think, to the zoo, the air fryers, there's something like ninety of, like, one of the libraries had. So there's, there's other things you can do besides books. So it's kind of nice for people to know that they can, they can go check out, you know, appliance or they use something or they can get passes to go places. So it's not just going into the library and reading a book, but if you wanted to go to the zoo or go to a event or someplace like that, there are all those options for the community.
Yeah, it's great.
So I wanted to emphasize on that because people may not think about that. Families wanna go do something or cook or experience something new, they can actually go check that out as well.
Mm-hmm. And the cultural passes are available online. So you don't even need to go into the library to do those. You can actually go on and reserve one online, which makes it even more accessible, which is exciting. Thank you.
So for Tiger Library Statistics, this is for fiscal year eighteen. Two hundred and thirty thousand items. So these are books, movies, music, and much more, including our new mobile hotspots. And also we have some other fun stuff coming along with our binge boxes. So boxes of movies that people can binge, five to seven movies in a box they can check out at once by director, by theme, for both juveniles and adults. We have one point two million checkouts and a hundred thousand of these are digital books and also e-audiobooks in that. E-audiobooks are incredibly popular now. And digital books, it's very interesting to have conversations with people at the circulation desk who are used to checking out large print, print books. And they're very excited to be able to check out digital books in which they can vary the size of the text at however much they want. So whole new world opening to people. We have three hundred and forty thousand library visits and so that breaks down to approximately one thousand visits per day. Fifteen thousand volunteer hours provided by three hundred volunteers. We have one of these volunteers in the room with us today. Linda. Wait. And people like Linda volunteer their time, their resources to participate in things such as shelving books, returning books to the shelves. They also pull what we call a request list. So books that are going to fulfill holds for Tiger patrons and throughout the whole cooperative. And they work on other special projects, cutting supplies for youth programs and other wonderful things. We would not be able to do what we do without our volunteers. And three hundred and eighty-four thousand library website visits. This is a significant number because, as you know, not everybody can always make it to the library as much as they'd like, but they're still able to access not only our catalog, but our databases such as linda.com and other resources that people can use out of the comfort of their own home or work or school. Some of these digital resources include the New York Times, which has a, you can get a free seventy-two hour subscription pass to the New York Times. So if you really wanna read up on your news, at least the East Coast news, you can get it there.
Okay, so that was sort of an overview of what we do, kind of at the county level, how we're structured and all of that kind of stuff. Now I'm gonna talk a little bit more about the services that we provide to support or supplement local library service. And I just have pictures up here to give you pictures and also to remind me what to talk about. So I'm gonna kind of go through them. The picture of the top left of that adorable little kid with the book is a snapshot from our Books for Kids program, which is an example of one of the really great partnerships we have in the county with Early Learning Washington County and the United Way. And what we do with this program is bring library materials, so books in English, Spanish, and also bilingual, English, Spanish books, to license-exempt in-home childcare providers. So these childcare providers are basically in-home daycares, but they don't often have the ability to take the kids out to the library. But these kids are often the ones who need library access the most. And so with this program, we're able to bring tubs of books to them. We swap them out to keep them fresh and we also provide instruction to the daycare staff on sort of the fundamental skills that kids, little kids need to learn, to be ready to learn how to read. So early literacy is what we call that. So when they graduate out of the program, they get to keep the books, which is really exciting. And so that's a really sort of great countywide project that we can work on. The picture to the right of that, at top right or middle, is just a snapshot, I think, from one of our migrant camp visits. So in the summer, WCCLS staff go out to camps where migrant farmworkers are, I think particularly in West County, and do storytimes for kids and bring books out for them as well. Again, a population of kids that may not be able to access the library or literacy stuff otherwise. We also do something called the Homebound Books by Mail Program. And so if you have, if you're not able to leave the house due to, you know, disability or illness, we are able, or if you live in a care facility, we can mail library materials to you. So we have a lovely, small group of staff in Hillsborough at our central office who will take calls and requests and get stuff on hold and then will actually literally mail it out to people and then they mail it back to us when they're done. And that's free of charge. And it's really a lifeline for people who aren't able to get out. We also provide sort of countywide programming for summer readings. So some libraries have more local resources than others, so we are able to provide sort of a baseline level of programming. So this is just a, I think, picture from when we had like a video game truck show up to every library to entice the teens to come in for summer reading. We also offer online tutoring. So kids can log on between, I think it's one and ten PM after school with our library card and they can get live tutoring in English and in Spanish.
So far as what the Tiger Library does for the youth and young patrons. So we have six hundred programs, approximately six hundred programs per year, including three hundred and seventy-five storytimes. There's a picture of one of our excellent librarians, Holly, in the top right corner in the blue in one of her storytimes, which is very well-attended. And as you can see, nineteen thousand attendees, not just across storytimes, but other youth services programs. On the left with the very adorable dog and also cute kids, I guess. That's part of our Dogs and Tales program in which we encourage young readers who are maybe not very confident reading to read out loud to these emotional support animals in our pewet room. And it's also very well-attended and it really helps kids connect that the act of reading and reading aloud and, and learning and gaining more confidence to gain those skills to take to school. We also have an initiative about reading one thousand books before kindergarten. And that's not specific to Tiger, but that is part of where you're seeing this picture with the, I've read a hundred books with that very cute baby with the headband. And it's not just one hundred or one thousand unique books because studies show that it counts to read the same book over and over to teach early literacy Lisa was talking about. And we have one of our young dance programs, also the, the two young dancers here in the, with the red background. Oh, still me. It's not all about the youth, although it definitely is focused on that. But we have plenty of adult services programs as well. We have two hundred and fifty programs a year with four thousand attendees. We have some examples here of felting flowers, Polynesian dance. We have a bunch of people in the lower left with ukuleles that you can barely see. How many people were in the room?
Fifty?
About a hundred.
A hundred people with ukuleles, something to see and hear. And egg decorating, beautiful egg decorating. And then we have in the lower right-hand corner a winner of one of our summer reading prize baskets. And we're very excited every year for both young kids and teens and adults to offer the summer reading programs that we do. The library, we get so many people coming in, reading, rediscovering their love of reading and young folks obviously just beginning on their journey of really loving reading. And the prizes are a nice incentive for them.
Okay, a little bit more about our central services. One of the sort of really backbone services that we provide is library material distribution, which is not very glamorous, but very important. So seven days a week, we move those one point seven million items that are held countywide. We move them all around the county. So we sort about ten thousand items a day at our central sort facility and drive about over fifty thousand miles a year to keep that stuff moving around the county.
And we too have our own book robot, as we like to refer to it. His name is Oscar because initially he was green and very grouchy. He is no longer quite as grouchy since he had all of his motors replaced. But with Oscar, we are able to sort well over a million items every year, which is kind of incredible when you think about it. The sorting happens when, from each of the induction points, as they're called, books are fed. And two of our induction points are actually patron induction points. So they get to feed their own books into the machine, not just staff. This saves a significant amount of time, which was previously done primarily by volunteers, but also staff to make sure it was taken off a patron record. Now this not only takes it off the patron record, but sorts it in a general location of where it will need to go to get back on the shelf. It is a huge asset for us and, and it's also a very fun conversation starter at the circulation desk. So patrons, like I said, like to use the induction points themselves. They checked in their own items almost half the time, four hundred and sixty thousand items in twenty eighteen. And here we have one of our staff members demonstrating how that works. This is a particular hit with kids. But the, the main boon of this part of our system is that it does come immediately off someone's record. And that means that fewer overdue fines and also somebody can make sure that they know exactly what they have checked out at any given time. This is, like, this says twenty-four to thirty-six hours faster in getting the items back on the shelves, which means it gets the items back in our patrons' hands. So that's a really important advantage to have in this AMH system.
Okay, another really important thing we do that is also maybe a little bit more behind the scenes is all of the network and library infrastructure that the county provides. So we're all on a shared system of all of our member libraries. We use the same library inventory management system and the public catalog interface and we need to have that shared system so that we can share all those materials and track all of the checkout centrally. So we support all of that, which requires network connections at all of the libraries. So we provide that and maintain that. And we also pay for all of the broadband and like internet access and in-library wifi in your library. We also provide wireless printing and internet filtering. So it's a really key resource for the community that is paid for by the county. Um, we.
Do you track, like, overall, how much, like, usually just done every month from the, you know, as far as like downloads, usually like gigabytes, how much you download? You, you.
That isn't, yes, but I don't know that number.
Okay.
But I could definitely get it for you. I think that's a great. I know we do track wifi stats. I don't know if you all had that collected, but we can, I can share a summary with you all after.
Yeah, that'd just be interesting. I mean, you, you don't compare to books checked out and things like that, but that'd just be, how much data was being used overall would be interesting to see.
That's a great question. Can I steal your pen?
Yes.
Just don't be alarmed. I know. Um, can you write it down and then remind me later? Okay. Countywide digital collections is another thing we provide centrally. Because it's all accessed through our website, it just makes sense for us to do it in one place instead of duplicating that effort across all of the local libraries. So these are just some screenshots. So we've got ebooks and audiobooks, like we talked about earlier. We also have something called linda.com, which is a wonderful video learning resource where people can, and it's pretty well-known as a brand name in the popular kind of awareness. It's something where people can learn about business skills, creative skills, tech skills. If you wanna learn coding or you wanna brush up on your supervisory skills or something, watch a class on that. Or if you wanna learn how to work your digital camera, that kind of thing, music production, we have like these great courses online. And then we also offer online language learning through Mango. And so people can learn other languages and they can also learn English. So we have a number of courses where you can learn English if you speak Korean or if you speak Spanish or all sorts of other languages. And people just log in with their library card and access those from anywhere. We also provide sort of centralized online services. I mentioned before the catalog and the website. I think I also mentioned the homework tutoring. We fairly recently, about a year ago, initiated online library card signup. So now if you're a resident of the county, you can get in online our website and create a library card account and it will give you immediate access to our digital services. So that huge collection of ebooks and audiobooks, linda.com, Mango, all of those things you can just get right away. And if you wanna then use it to check out physical materials, you would just come into a, a member library building to convert your card over. And we also launched online fine payment about three or four months ago. And now we're gonna switch a little over to levy progress. So we passed the levy in twenty fifteen and it was a five cent increase over the previous rate. So we went from seventeen cents to twenty-two cents. And so some of the things that we did with that extra revenue is what I'm gonna share here. One of the things I'm not gonna talk about in these slides. I mean, as a member, a good chunk went to that. But another significant chunk went to really improving our digital collections. Demand was really great, but we didn't have a lot of the resources to really meet that demand and so we've been able to dedicate more to that. We've also been able to add, so with that extra funding, we've been able to add Spanish ebooks and audiobooks, which was something we got a lot of requests for, but due to budget constraints, we couldn't do. So we've been building that collection in the last few years, which is very exciting. We also about, I think last summer, we launched Canopy, which is an online streaming service. So you can watch documentaries, foreign films, Criterion Collection, educational stuff for kids, all sorts of really great content that you can get, you know, on your phone, on your laptop, on your Roku or Apple TV, things like that.
So can I ask a couple of questions about the digital collection just to sort of make sure I understand where things are at at this point? So, and, and some of this, you may have to, my, I know our Tiger Library team will keep it straight here, but I'm trying to just get a sense of, you know, certainly providing digital content, like our cost of handling the materials and providing it to someone and not having to store it and all that. I mean, like, that all costs a lot less, I would suspect. And frankly, my memory from maybe my prior times with the library was that the average book before it's destroyed or out of date gets checked out between ten and twenty times, I think? Am I right about that?
So that's much higher.
It's more, much higher? So that was my memory on average for our collection, but, so it's much higher. What is the number? You don't know, but it's higher than that. The reason I'm asking is I kinda wanna compare, like, are we, on a per-unit basis, I would assume that using the digital, I mean, my intuition, which could be totally wrong, is that the digital collection is cheaper to provide to someone ultimately because it's not taking, you know, space on the floor. It's not, you know, so we don't have to pay, we don't have to pay to store it in square feet and all that. But do you know the answer to that?
The cost per circ, or the, yeah, cost per circulation, cost per checkout
Yeah.
for digital books, it's really complicated. And it's, I think it was about two dollars, but I don't wanna be quoted on that for sure.
And what does it cost for a regular, I mean, do you know what the cost is even countywide for, for a paper?
It would vary so widely because, to be honest, the biggest part of a cost of running the library is personnel. Do you know what I mean? It's the staff time used to like move all that material around and, and help people access it and all of it. It's all that value added that staff brings. So the really challenging things about comparing digital to print in terms of cost is that the digital books actually cost us way more in terms of a unit price just for the actual book itself and, which is kind of counterintuitive because you would think it's online, it's gonna be cheaper. But actually, print books are much cheaper to purchase. A lot of the digital books that we buy are between eighty and a hundred dollars a copy.
But does that then mean it can be checked out in perpetuity?
It depends. So it's really, you're getting right into all this interesting stuff.
I'm sorry.
No, no, it's great. It's, it depends on the publisher. And so digital publishing and how it relates to libraries is a really interesting and constantly changing thing. So there's like the big five publishers and they all have different models. So some of them will sell a library and ebook in perpetuity and those are usually in the eighty to a hundred dollar range. But those can only be checked out, all of these can only be checked out one at a time. So I can't, if we have one copy.
You got one license.
Yeah, and not, it's not a simultaneous-use license.
Right.
We have to wait. So we have to order more copies to keep the whole queue down. Then some publishers prefer to do a model where the book expires after twenty-six checkouts or a year. And those are cheaper. They're maybe forty-ish, twenty to forty bucks a copy. So we just buy them more often. So it's a really shifting sort of landscape as publishers try to figure out how they wanna handle this. They're really used to dealing with print distribution and libraries, but for, for publishers, it's a new thing relatively. So it's hard to compare cost per circ in that sense. But in terms of, we have one full-time staff person at, at the county who manages the collection. And then the budget for the digital content, I think, next fiscal year, fiscal year twenty is proposed at one point six million dollars. Um, and then the budget for the digital content, I think, um, next fiscal year, fi- fiscal year twenty is proposed at one point six million dollars.
Thank you. Sorry for putting you through all that.
No, I'm always happy to talk about the craziness of digital publishing. And then, um, digital checkouts continue to rise. So, um, we first hit the million dollar, or million checkout mark. A million dollars would be great too. I'd love a million dollars for the library. Um, million checkout mark in twenty eighteen. That was the calendar year. Um, and then another thing, so Tiger already, um, Halsted already shared about the, um, automated materials handling machine they have locally. At the county, we got that, um, for the whole cooperative, and we just launched that a year ago this month. Um, before, we used to hand sort items and libraries also, most libraries without AMH had to hand sort items as well for the whole county. And so we centralized that. It's created a lot of efficiency, um, for member libraries. And I think the next slide, yeah. Um, we're seeing that, um, we're saving, libraries estimate that we're saving about twenty-five hours of staff time daily across the county, which is a huge savings. Um, and they're able to redeploy staff to do more meaningful projects. So I just, with Beaverton, for example, I just heard that they're actually reallocating some staff positions to outreach. So they're able to get out of the workroom and into the community as a result of, um, our centralized sort. Yeah.
On the, um, on the digital checkout, and, and maybe it's a fourth thinking thought, but since in a sense you guys, if someone goes onto the, the website, library website, and sees these books, and maybe they like it or something like that, and they end up buying it, has there ever been a thought or talk about having a kind of partnership where if someone did click on to buy, that the libraries would get a portion or get kind of a advertising or something like that where, you know, someone reads it and they like it and wanna give it as a gift or an ebook, something like that, so they either buy a paper or they buy that? Is there any kind of a partnership like that?
I believe that that has been an option in the past. I'm not sure if it's an option right now with our current vendor, but I know it's something that's hotly debated by librarians because, um, you know, is it the public sector, you know, as a pub- it's a public resource, and then are we kind of directing people to buy? And then do we direct some, do, do we direct someone to Amazon or to Powell's or bookstore? So it gets really complicated, and so I think, um, we haven't gone that route, but there are libraries that, that look at that. And that would be an interesting way to do it is if we got a, a small part of the proceeds.
Or, 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 yeah, that's what we say, after, like, after five books purchased, and then they'll send you a book or something like that. There would be some kind of a partnership would be great.
Yeah. It's a really evolving area, and so it's fun to, um, kind of work with the vendors on the possibilities. Another thing people would love to be able to do, they've told us, is donate ebooks to us. Um, you know, like they bought an ebook, they're done with it. They're like, why can't I donate it to you? Cause I can donate my print books to you. So there's all sorts of different workflows that we need to figure out over time. Yeah, exactly. It's complicated, but, um, yeah, it's fun. Okay, that was AMH. Oh, and the other thing, um, for a lot of our, we have some really tiny libraries in the county, and so a lot of them have reported saving about fifty percent, um, gaining fifty percent more space in their back rooms. They have less, um, totes that they need to store to sort all the materials, um, which is, is huge for some of them. Another exciting thing that we did recently, um, just this past fall, was launch our brand new catalog. Um, we like to say, um, the catalog is a search interface where you can search for everything that we have, um, placeholders, check your account, all that kinda stuff. Um, and we like to say it brings together the best of the web with the best of your library. So our previous catalog was maybe a little bit clunky. Um, I think we're looking to kind of give a more up-to-date and, um, contemporary experience that people expect because they see it everywhere else on the web, so why can't the library be like that? So we've really been able to improve the search experience with this new product. Um, there's also easier ways to browse. So one of the things we're trying to explore is, like, when you go into the library, like, the staff have made displays and you can see, oh, like, maybe like Teresa's recommending this or whatever. Um, and how can we bring that onto the digital space? Because that's where a lot of people are interacting with us, but we haven't been able to sort of provide that service. So if you go check out our catalog, you can actually see lists of recommendations by staff, by library, um, so that they're able to sort of surface content that we have and help people explore different things. So I don't know. I've had many people tell me, I go to the catalog now and I just place holds on all these different things that I wouldn't have run across otherwise. So it's sort of bringing that browsing experience that you get in the library to our online space. Um, we've also just added some more, a personalized experience. So you can add shelves. If you're like interested in Thai cooking, you can have a shelf where you just track all your Thai cooking books or whatever. So it's a, it's a big improvement, and we're having fun kind of exploring the possibilities of that new tool. Okay, and then now we're switching to looking ahead, um, for the next couple of years with WCCLS. So we actually just today, I came from like a six-hour strategic planning retreat. Um, so we're in the, um, get focused phase right now. So we've, uh, contracted, the county's contracted with the Coraggio Group. They're a local, um, consulting firm, and they are wonderful. And so we went through a great period of stakeholder engagement. So we had a survey. We had over three hundred and fifty responses from member library staff, city managers, um, library board, representatives and community partners. Um, so we're working on developing the plan, um, hopefully having it approved this summer. And then, um, we'll work on, with Coraggio for a year after, like, so the summer twenty nineteen through summer twenty twenty on implementing the plan. It's a three-year plan. It will get us over the next levy cycle. Um, and it's something that's fairly, um, new for us at WCCLS, so it's exciting. So stay tuned for more about that once we have it. And then the last thing I wanted to share with you all is coming up. Um, and so we are figuring out very soon when we're gonna put the next levy on the ballot. Um, it's either gonna be in May or November of twenty twenty. Um, we are looking at going for a renewal of the current rate, so not an increase, um, which is at twenty-two cents. Um, and this summer slash fall, so we're gonna have strategic planning, hopefully sort of in place by the summer, and then the fall, we'll start talking about how we structure the public library funding distribution, five-year chunk, um, of the levy cycle. So that's kind of what's on our radar in the next few years, a lot of big picture stuff. And I think that's all we had to share for now. Thank you so much for your great questions.
Halsted or Teresa, on the, um, stat about library visits and library website visits, I know people come to the library and visit the website for different reasons, you know, there are different things. How are those numbers historically? Are they growing about the same rate? Or are they, you know, I mean, are, are we just sort of have the same kind of percentage and they're, cause it's the same, you know, website people or website people and library visitors or library visitors? Is, is it changing over time or do you even know yet?
I didn't look. I must think I looked.
Yeah, I'm just curious, cause I know people come to the library for the library experience, and people use the website for other reasons. So they're often two different, you know, groups. But I was just kinda curious as to if you keep an eye on how those numbers-
Plus, we're asking them to go more places. Go to the WCCLS, go to Tiger, go to City, go to, go to different, two different catalogs.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I, I can look and I'll, I'll let you know.
That'd be great, cause I know they, they use the, uh, website often for different reasons, so. Okay, thanks.
So far as, excuse me, Councilor Newton, so far as the, um, library visits, we have seen a, a slight decline, but not anything that has been more than a percent or two over the past several years. But it doesn't seem to be, um, then inflating library website visits. In the last, the last time we collected these, these, there didn't seem to be a correlation.
A shift.
Right.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Sure.
Other council questions or comments?
Nope, thank you.
Thank you very much. Very thorough. Appreciate it. All right, next item on the agenda is to receive an update on the proposed amendments to our urban forestry manual. Welcome Lena and Tom.
Green. I'm Tom McGuire. I'm the Assistant Community Development Director. Uh, I'm gonna start off, Lena will cover the, uh, actual amendments for proposing to the manual, but I, I wanted to start off sort of, I guess going from books to trees here. We're giving you a little bit of an update on, uh, how things are working with the urban forestry, uh, program and the urban forestry code. Uh, I was sitting there thinking, uh, when we adopted the urban forestry code, the whole package, uh, none of you are actually councillors on, were you on the council at that point in time?
About a month and a half.
By a month and a half, yeah, okay. I was thinking through the, all of the various hearings we had on that.
I was even asked before I took, you know, whether I would have problems passing it, cause they, there was discussion about it in that December of that twenty twelve or whatever.
Yes, yes. Um, so I would say overall that the program has been working pretty well. Um, for those of you who are, who may not be completely familiar with it, we shifted to a, a program that protects tree canopy or, uh, is focused on providing tree canopy as opposed to individual trees. And, uh, we do that by zone, so different zones have, actually, we changed that. We're changing that. We'll talk about that. We started out by doing it by zone. So, uh, say in residential zones, you'd have a twenty-five percent canopy coverage, and we allowed, um, a variety of, of ways for people to do that. You can save trees, existing trees on the site, and we will, uh, give you credit, canopy credit for the size of the tree canopy that you have. You can pay into a tree fund or you can plant trees. And we have tables of, uh, many of the various different species of trees that you can plant and how much credit you get, uh, based on the, uh, size of the canopy and maturity. So, um, there were some concerns initially about, is it gonna be too complex, about some requirements for, uh, having, uh, foresters or, or, I'm sorry, arborists having to put the plans together and, uh, landscape architects. And I think that really worked out pretty well from the very beginning. Uh, the development community is, is definitely used to working with it now, um, and there hasn't been too many issues with that. Uh, so overall, I think the program is working pretty well. There are two areas that I just wanted to bring up tonight that, one area that's not working at all and another area that has brought up some issues. And I will say that I've had a couple of conversations with the Planning Commission, um, about these issues, and, uh, they are, we're, I'm discussing with them, they may be interested in when they have their next, uh, joint meeting with you is having the code policy issues as a topic for discussion, uh, with you. So the one area that is not working at all is, uh, significant tree groves. The committee that was put together through the public process, it was decided we would try to uh, create some incentives for preserving tree groves, but not have actual regulations. And that's really not working. Other than a particular developer out in River Terrace, uh, they've saved some tree, significant tree groves and some portions of tree groves. Uh, throughout the rest of the city, we're not seeing anyone protecting any-
It's not protecting?
It's not protecting those tree groves.
Okay, I was gonna ask you what part of it wasn't working. That's the answer.
They're not taking advantage of the incentives and, and those tree groves are, are mostly-
So it's not resulting in preservation?
Correct.
Okay.
And then, uh, because of the shift to canopy focus, uh, there are some sites where we're losing some individual fairly substantial trees. So the program isn't focused on that. It's something that, you know, we knew may happen, but there, there's been some developments around town where, uh, and we've heard from neighbors that there's been some, you know, a, a large uh, sequoia or some large oak trees that, that people had an interest, would have liked to have seen saved, but because we're not focused on that, those trees have been coming down, uh, because the developer felt like, uh, it was better for their program to pay into the fund or to plant. It was, uh, they don't, you know, you don't have control over where those trees are in their development scheme, so. That's something we may want to consider looking at in the future. If there's a certain size of tree or species size combination that we wanna add some extra protection to. Uh, so with that, the program in general and how things have been going, I will turn it over to Lena Smith to talk about specific changes we're proposing to the manual. Yes?
This is weird, but when I was campaigning, I had three people ask me if they needed a permit to cut down a tree on their property cause they couldn't figure out if they did. I said, well, you could call the city.
Uh-huh.
But, um, that didn't change, did it? If you're, if you have an existing residential piece of property and you just need to cut a tree down for some reason, they don't need a permit, right? Or do they now?
Usually not. It depends if it's a tree in a sensitive lands, then they do need a permit, and we would have to look on the map and see if it is or isn't.
Okay.
Uh, street trees, we do require permits, but if it's a single dwelling residence, tree in the backyard, no.
In their backyard, yeah, okay. They were just kinda confused, and I suggested they contact you. Okay, thanks.
And that was, um, you'll remember, that was a change that the council actually requested at the, as we adopted the tree code. Yeah.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm Lena Smith, Assistant Planner in the Community Development Department. I'm here tonight to discuss proposed amendments to the Urban Forestry Manual. So just some quick background, um, as Tom was saying, the Urban Forestry Manual was originally approved in two thousand thirteen. Uh, it is, consists of administrative rules that implement details of the Urban Forestry Related Code provisions in the Municipal Code and the Community Development Code. Um, for example, the manual outlines the process and procedures for tree removal permits and also the minimum canopy requirements for new developments throughout the city. So tonight's staff is presenting the proposed amendments for council's consideration. Um, these amendments are based on feedback from residents, developers and city staff. Staff has kept a log of suggested changes since the manual was created in twenty thirteen, uh, and those are incorporated tonight. Uh, the goal of these proposed amendments is to clarify the manual's policies and procedures for customers and also to make the manual consistent with the newly updated Community Development Code that was approved, um, this past December. So some examples, uh, for consistency with the Community Development Code include updating terminology, uh, taking out shall and changing it to must, um, updating outdated numerical code references and some of the chapter numbering changed. And, um, changing the minimum canopy requirements. As Tom said, they're currently outlined by zones, but we've changed them to be outlined by development types. So it'll say, you know, for apartments, it's this much, single detached houses, it's this much. Um, some other proposed, uh, examples of amendments is to add canopy credit bonus for developers who preserve, uh, young native trees. Uh, that was a suggestion from an arborist because preserving an existing young tree, uh, is more, more valuable in the long term than planting a new young tree. We just wanna encourage developers to preserve those. Um, and clarifying the tree bonding requirements. Um, so, uh, right now, there's separate bond requirements for street trees from planning, and then from public works, there's a bond requirement for public improvement sidewalks and such. So we, uh, suggest incorporating the street trees into the existing public works bond. So there'll be one bond instead of two for developers. So hopefully that'll help eliminate redundancy. Um, and then the full text of amendments was provided in the council packet that you have tonight. Uh, one item that was, uh, that we actually found that we'd like to add that isn't in the text version you have is to, um, we suggest allowing customers to remove nuisance trees in sensitive lands through a simple tree removal permit. We allow them to do that for street trees and other types of trees, but, uh, we just caught that that was somehow left out in the sensitive land section. So we just recommend adding that for consistency. Um, the text of that will be added, um, before uh, we publish, uh, a newspaper notice about the amendments and before the final version that is reviewed by the city manager. So because the manual is made up of administrative rules, uh, the Municipal Code, um, outlines two options for council's next steps. Um, so staff would like direction on next steps tonight. Uh, the first option would be for council to move the proposed amendments forward for public notice in a newspaper and, uh, review. So we'll receive public comments. And then after receiving public comments, the city manager will either approve, modify or reject the proposed amendments. The second option is to add the amendments to discussion agenda for another council meeting, uh, for council consideration or action. And staff recommends the first option that, uh, the proposed amendments be moved forward for public notice and review. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Just clarification on the process. The staff recommendation that you have up there, yeah, goes, calls for then the city manager to make, I guess I wanna be clear, to make the- I guess I wanna be clear, to make the decision? Okay.
That's correct, yes.
Okay. I just wanna make sure everybody's clear on that, because that, so under that, under that recommendation, it would not even come back to the council? Is everybody clear on that? Counselor Newton?
Can I just have a quick question, Lena, on that permit for trees in the sensitive lands? So I, I assume what would happen is it would be identified as a nuisance tree, documented as such. And then with that documentation, the person, applicant could come in and say, I have this documentation, so I wanna request a permit. Is that generally how it would be?
Yes, that's correct. We have a, a list of nuisance trees that an arborist put together that's in the manual. So we would compare, and they usually submit documentation saying, this is the, the species and it's nuisance. And, yeah, they can easily get a simple tree removal permit.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions? Counselor Lou?
Um, I just have a question as far as the process and the two different approvals. Has there been historically situations like this in code changes that have gone through the city manager, or have they historically come to council? Is there precedent?
I, I would, I would answer that by saying historically, at least in the last six years, most of these kinds of things have come to council. I would say that we've started to delegate a little bit, I think we had one last year, I can't remember exactly what it was, that we gave, we delegated the authority to the city manager.
Yes, so the nature of administrative rulemaking is that it, once the council has taken action on the matters as they're related to the development code and policy, the more detailed and, you know, and this is, this is an example of, you know, very detailed and operational work that we embody in administrative rules. And it's approved, it, it's with, you know, with the council's knowledge, it's approved administratively. So, the, the two areas in the city where we have administrative rulemaking is in our water, in the administration of our, our water operations and then our, our tree code.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Counselor Anderson?
Actually, I guess, Tom, I, going back to your summary. So, if I remember right, we had quite a backlog of mitigation. Builders needing to plant, and we didn't have any room for them to plant or any land. Has that cleared up, or are they paying fees in lieu of that? How is that working?
Well, it was a combination of what you described, planting, and we had some pretty large fees or fines that needed to be paid. And yes, we've cleared all of that up.
Okay, good. That was, that was the point of all this, right?
Any other questions or comments?
Uh, no, this is good, it's just cleaning it up, it looks, looks a lot better and, uh, it was a good document to begin with, it's even better now.
Council president could ask me? Okay, we're, um, are you looking for us to give a nod on a preference for the process?
Yes, please.
Yes, please. That's very kind of you. Uh, is there any counselor who cannot live with allowing the city manager to review and approve this as proposed by the staff?
That sounds great to me.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, our last agenda item for this evening is to receive our quarterly capital improvement plan update. City engineer, Fay.
Hello, mayor and council. I guess, looks like my PowerPoint's gonna load here in a second. Okay, excellent, thank you. Just for the sake of the new counselors. Traditionally, I come and try to give an update about the status of the capital improvement plan, the implementation of the projects that are currently ongoing in our budget. On about a quarterly basis, it, it actually is more like, I call it like the, the OSU quarter system, because it's usually more like three times a year. But, um, so the last time I came to council was in November. It disappeared. It's coming back, okay, thank you. But the, the whole point here is to let you know how it's going in terms of the implementation of our, of our capital projects. We currently have more than forty active capital projects that the engineering division is managing, so it's, it's a lot of work. And I also just wanted to, um, maybe just point out, just really briefly, kind of what engineering's function is in the city. And so we, we primarily do two different things. So, so one is we implement the capital improvement program, the, which is the capital projects that we oversee design and construction of. The other thing is, is that we permit development projects that will build public infrastructure in the city. So, the, basically our job is to see that new and repairs to public infrastructure are done well. So we have long-lasting infrastructure. So... All right, so what I will go through is, kind of for each of our systems, there's, there will be a list of the projects. And just kind of a red light, yellow light, green light on how we're doing on each of those projects. And I'll talk a little bit about most of them, and then if there's questions, please feel free to ask. And I guess one of the things I'll, again, I'll mention just for those who haven't seen this before is that typically with the green, yellow, and red, in terms of schedule, if there is, say, a minor issue noted with schedule, that's typically due to permitting processes may take longer than we hope. Sometimes there's staff bandwidth issues. We've recently been down a couple of staff in engineering, luckily we're, we're pulling new folks in. And sometimes there are scope changes to projects. And then in terms of cost, typically the issues have been either with escalating construction costs, with, with the economy, the economy, excuse me. Or sometimes there are additional scope changes. So, let's move into the actual projects. The Fannell Creek remeander, I'm, I'm pretty excited about a number of our parks' projects. The Fannell Creek remeander, you know, almost right outside of here is, is nearly complete except for some of the vegetation work that Clean Water Services is doing. Dirksen Nature Park, we've got a wonderful new shelter and restroom in place now in Nature Play area. And at the end of this presentation, I'll talk a little bit more, we're gonna be celebrating that, that whole area and our Fannell Creek Regional Trail in general at a camus festival that we're gonna hold in April. And that I hope we will do yearly, if it works out well. Probably the thing that would get the most attention here is that the oak savanna restoration mentions the cattle that are coming in May. So, the process of restoring an oak savanna, which has the beautiful camus in it, is that in, in a natural oak savanna, you would have typically like elk grazing these areas. And, and we can't just somehow make elk appear. So apparently cows are the closest thing to elk. And so we're gonna be bringing a herd of cows in for two to three weeks in May to mimic the elk to keep the savanna in good condition. And I would anticipate that every few years, we would do the same over again.
This is like rent-a-herd kinda thing?
Basically, yes. So it's gonna be in that kind of northern part of Dirksen Nature Park up closer to Tigard Street. And, and they will be fenced in, so they won't be roaming at will. Yeah. The, let's see, the Tigard Street Heritage Trail, um, that has been a fun one to work its way through all the agencies, particularly all the railroad agencies. I'm, I'm very hopeful that we're getting close, but every time we turn in a set of plans, they seem to come back with an additional set of comments and questions. And while we've had some help breaking that logjam, they, the latest set of what we thought was a hundred percent plans, we are still getting a couple more comments back on that. But hopefully we'll be building that this summer.
Is that at a point, I mean, with what you've just said, is that coming from the railroads themselves or from ODOT rail? And I, the reason I'm asking is, is it time for, I know it's the last possible step, but is it time for the politicians to get involved?
So the comments are a combination of ODOT rail and TRIMET. We have had, Marty has been very helpful in prodding and poking and, and breaking a lot of that logjam. So, I'm gonna say hopefully not.
Okay. Well, we're, we're available for that.
Thank you. There it goes. Fannell Creek Trail, the, uh, regional flexible funds grant project. So that is for four segments of Fannell Creek Trail, design and construction. That's the Woodard Park segment, the segment behind City Hall, the segment behind the library, and then the section down by the Durham wastewater treatment plant, down to the Cuyahutts Bridge. And I think this is actually an interesting story because we're, we're at thirty percent design. When we, first we're looking at thirty percent design, it looked like it was gonna be way over budget. And that was pretty frightening, we were talking about maybe dropping some elements, and then ODOT wasn't real happy about that. And, uh, this is a, a project where we were able to work with ODOT and with the consultant. ODOT manages this project because we're not a certified agency and they're managing the grant. But they're allowing us to work well with the design consultant. And we were able to look for opportunities to do a little bit of value engineering and reduce some of the boardwalk sections, reduce some of the bridges. And behind City Hall, make a little bit more of it be like maintenance and paving the existing trail rather than relocating the trail. And it looks like we're coming pretty close to budget now, so I'm pretty happy to, to say that that process is, is working. And I think that, I know there are times, questions about if we have a, an ODOT administered project, what do we do if the project goes over budget, because ODOT always says that extra money is on us? I think this one's a good example of being able to work well with them and bring a project back to within budget. Fannell Creek Trail at Tiedemann, that's another one that's across the street from Dirksen Nature Park, that's that new bridge that's been installed. And the next thing you'll see there that will be interesting is that we've hired a graffiti artist to paint the retaining wall so that it won't get graffitied. So there's a similar project on the Grant Street part of the, the Fannell Creek Trail. So just in case you get phone calls, you know that that's graffiti on purpose. Let's see. Parks Master Plan Project, that's something that a request for proposals will go out for shortly, and we'll just be starting that project. Just, you know, there'll be a substantial public process involved with updating the Parks Master Plan. Let's see, the Fannell Creek Trail Alignment Study, that's the last missing segment of the Fannell Creek Trail. That's from Benita down to Durham Road. So we have a grant, that evaluation to figure out where should that trail go? It's the most difficult section to place a trail in, there's, the, the creek really meanders around. It could be extremely expensive to put a trail down in that area, so it's gonna be a lot of work to figure out what's the best path for it. The reason why the schedule is yellow is because frankly, our project manager is heading out on maternity leave. So when she returns, we'll pick up the project. Let's talk about streets projects. I'll show you in a bit a picture for the, the Slurry Seal Streets for this year, so I'll, I'll, I'll save that till I show the graphic. Let's see, I know there's always questions from the mayor about the Upper Boones Ferry Durham Adaptive Project, which continues to be slow, ODOT is renegotiating the design contract to get it started again because it had been delayed so long due to figuring out what the impacts of ODOT's lawsuit about Americans with Disabilities Act, what impacts that was gonna have on the project.
I'm just excited to see the budget green. Is it gonna stay that way?
I believe so.
Okay.
So, and basically, we've already paid our match to the, it's a grant-funded project, and we've already paid our match to it.
I'm just one, you know, worried that they're gonna limit the scope of the work, but anyway. Keep at it.
We are, we are, we continue to push on that one. The Commercial Street Sidewalk Project, Main to Lincoln, the budget is yellow on that one. That, that is one that is led by TRIMET. It was to construct a couple of different, fill a couple of different sidewalk gaps, one along Commercial Street, and then another along ninety-nine W, down towards King City. Because of cost issues, the segment down towards King City is, I'm anticipating it's gonna be dropped. We tried to find a way to help find some additional money, but the money we could find would be next fiscal year, and that wasn't soon enough for them. But at least it's designed, and maybe we can find ways for that to happen in the future, the Commercial Street segment will happen. And... Let's see, Hensaker, uh, Wall Street is built, and then the last segment of it up to Tech Center Drive, we're getting ready, ready to issue a, um, a request for proposals for design. Roy Rogers Road is under construction.
Excuse me, real quick, I went on a ride along with a police officer last night who was real excited about Tech Center Drive.
Oh, yeah?
She didn't know about it, and so we went up there and she was real excited that it's gonna go through, so, yeah.
Mm-hmm. Uh, let's see, Nor, North Dakota Bridge Replacement, that project is winding its way towards starting. And, um, I expect the request for proposals for design will probably happen over the next few months. That's another one that's managed by ODOT. The Seventy Second Avenue Study, so that is determining what the cross-section of Seventy Second Avenue should look like through the Tigard Triangle. There's gonna be an open house for a variety of transportation projects, including this one on April ninth. So, it'll, we'll be looking for citizen input on some different options for Seventy Second and the Triangle, which is basically how many lanes and what types of other features in terms of the sidewalks and bike lanes and parking.
A selection, are those, that yellow and orange, is that two different colors on purpose, or is that just a selection of similar shades?
I know, one of them looks orange and one of them looks yellow, doesn't it? No, sorry, I think that's just user error on the PowerPoint.
Okay, so those are all the same category?
They're all the yellow.
Yeah, those are all yellowish.
Okay, okay.
Let's see, Hundred Twenty First Avenue, very exciting, the project that people have been waiting for forever. So the county picked that up through their MSTIP program. That actually has had a kickoff meeting with their design consultant, and survey work will start soon. So very excited about that. Let's see, what else will be of interest? Uh, Main Street Phase Two, we're preparing the request for proposals for design, so that should go out on the street shortly as well. And we're also preparing some information so we can, um, we've done some work to talk to the business owners along Main Street Phase One and kind of learn from their experiences, so we can apply that to Phase Two. And the Traffic Safety Action Plan is, is kind of an exciting thing. It was something where our transportation engineer was able to get some money from ODOT to complete this plan. And this will provide some really good impact, uh, input to our, our Transportation System Plan Update about where are the areas that we have crashes now, and how might, might we be able to do something to help prevent those in the future? And that will be starting up soon, but most of it will be done again when our project manager returns from leave. Moving on to water projects. Let's see, I think probably the most important thing here is the Water Master Plan. We've been updating that plan. It, it's been a little slower than I hoped, but it's really about trying to properly scope this because the world keeps changing around us, because we're looking at how much growth is going to occur and what impacts will that have on our, as well as the ability of our system to be able to transport the flow where it needs to go. And as we talk about things like King City growth and potential Tigard expansion, that's adding scope to that master plan. So we're adding that now, so we can further evaluate what the needs are. And what we anticipate is that needs for expansion of our systems are coming sooner because of the growth rates that we're seeing. So you will be seeing some discussions about that. So you will be seeing some discussions about that, um I anticipate, in the next few months. Um, and we've also been working with uh Lake Oswego as our partner on that as well.
All right, Lori, so are they doing the same thing? I mean, are they do- are we doing it together or are they doing?
They've just completed, Lake Oswego just completed their Water Master Plan Update.
Okay.
They uh completed it about six months ago, so we're following them. We are working on um a conservation plan together.
Okay.
But we meet monthly and discuss the master plans and coordination. And and they've identified, for instance, projects that might be in Tigered that might be of assistance to them. For instance, there's a i- i- for us to be able to receive all of the water from Lake Oswego, uh r- right now we're limited to fourteen MGD. If we wanna take it up to the eighteen MGD we might be able to get up to, there's a need to build a larger pipeline from uh between the Waluga Reservoir and Lake Oswego and Benita. And that project would help both of us, because for us, it could get more water to the city. For them, if there's um an emergency, it could get more water back the other way to them. So things like that we're coordinating on. Um, the Hundred Twenty First Avenue Project, the the uh Bicycle and Pedestrian Improvements Project, we're uh combining with that a Water Improvement Project. That's the um valve and piping improvements, which will help us to better transport flow from the direction of Lake Oswego over to the direction of River Terrace, so we're gonna do that together. Um, and then the Water Rate and SDC Study will um follow completion of the master plan, so that's why the schedule shows yellow. And I guess what I should mention about the Water Rate Study, and I'll, it'll come up again with Stormwater, with the Stormwater Rate Study, I know there's a desire to have an understanding of um all of the utilities, um future potential rate and systems development charge needs as related to these updated master plan studies and updated operational needs. So um we will be coming back to you in the near future to discuss um particularly Stormwater and Water, because those would be the rate studies that we need to conduct uh pretty soon here. Sanitary Sewer System, uh let's see. East Fork Dairy Dell Creek is ki- kind of a cool project to do a stream restoration project to prevent erosion and to help uh protect a sanitary sewer line that right now is exposed in the creek, so that will get constructed this summer. Um, the Sanitary Syphon Repair Project is another exposed sewer line that goes under Fano Creek, and um part of it's actually exposed in Fano, so it would be the construction of a new one. The schedule is shown in yellow because we have some issues with um an important piece of easement acquisition, which is uh dealing with the uh property under discussions is taking longer than we'd hoped. And Sanitary Sewer System, um, oh, that's that's major maintenance. I'm sorry, I was, it made me think of the Sanitary Sewer Master Plan, which you'll see starting next year. So that'll be the next uh infrastructure system master plan uh that we will be doing an update for is next fiscal year. Stormwater Projects, um Arthur Court, there's, if you ever walk behind the library and go down the, what's called the Colony Creek Trail, and you see the um amazing amount of erosion that's right along the edge of that trail, and that's been going on for a while, so we're um uh gonna get that constructed this summer to stabilize that. I'm very excited about that, 'cause it's actually a pretty scary slope. Um, Hundred Twenty Fourth Avenue, that's another construction this summer where we have a undersized culvert that is undermining the street. So and along with that, we've, we noted that there's a gap in the sidewalk, so we're gonna build a new section of sidewalk along with the new culvert. Stormwater Rate Study, I mentioned that, you'll recall that a year ago, council adopted the new Stormwater Master Plan that identified a lot of needs. And so this rate study will look at what would it take to fund those projects as well as operations and maintenance needs, including things like all the new stormwater facilities coming online in River Terrace, and um what are some of the options for that? And uh the, one other thing I'll mention is the Kruger Creek Pre-Design. So if you remember when we adopted the Stormwater Master Plan, there was that video, and Carla was standing in the big canyon with all the erosion. And so that's kind of our first major priority project is to restore that eroding creek channel. So we're completing a pre-design to confirm what we need to do, that it's really permissible and and firm up the costs, so that work is being completed right now.
Does, and does that run into a culvert underneath the road? Is that green? Which, is that Hundred Twenty Fourth or what's that, what's that road that that creek goes down into and there's a culvert under the road?
So, well, interestingly, actually, Hundred Twenty Fourth and Anne is Kruger Creek, but that's, the Hundred, Hundred, Hundred Twenty Fourth and Anne is the way downstream end of Kruger Creek down by the uh the lower end of Jack Park. The part that we took you on a um a tour of was um, let's see, I'm trying to think. Uh, it goes under Gardie, and it goes under um Benchview. Thank you.
Benchview, so is that one on there? 'Cause that culvert, I think, was, I remember on that tour that you guys were constantly looking at that one, 'cause that one's undersized too. Is that one, part of that Kruger Creek?
That's part of that project, is to look at that whole stretch. That-
That stretch and that culvert, or not the culvert, but the pipe underneath the road?
Yeah, the pipe under the road, it's not necessarily undersized, but it's kind of scary because there's a big tall road fill with the one pipe, and we always worry about debris and sticks and mud filling that up. If it did, the water would have no place to go but fill way up behind the road and potentially have a catastrophe from it. Let's see, the um, another project I expect we'll be coming back to talk to you about, I'm gonna say in May or June, will be the um ADA Transition Plan. And uh there'll be a lot to talk about there, so in our evaluation of um our-
Is that your way of warning us that we better be-
Yes.
Ready and put a seatbelt on?
Pretty much, pretty much. That, there was, there was a lot of our city um right-of-way infrastructure, so sidewalks and curb ramps that don't meet ADA, current ADA requirements. There's a lot of elements of our public buildings and of our parks that um the assessment informed us that are um not meeting current ADA requirements and and design guidelines. So there will be a lot to talk about. We need to prepare a plan that commits us to heading down a path to um repairing and replacing a whole lot of piece, a whole lot of assets. And uh um I think it will be a pretty difficult conversation. So a little bit of a heads up there. Um, and then the Public Works Facility and Yard, that that is the process of looking for a new home for Public Works, new home or homes for Public Works uh that will take care of um future needs in terms of the amount of area we need for our people and equipment, um as well as moving out of the downtown area. So there'll be much more coming on that as well. So this map shows, um basically what you're looking at here is the colorful areas are those streets that are planned for slurry seal, uh this uh crack seal and slurry seal this summer. And so it, um, there's kind of three parts of the city. Basically, some areas up on Bull Mountain, the area um west of the high school, and then kind of some of the northern part of the city. And the the different colors really just mean are are more for us technically. It's about how many cracks are there to seal on the different streets, or how much uh early repair work do we need to do before we bring in the slurry seal. Uh the other part of the program is that, is the pavement overlay, and this year that's gonna be on Durham Road. And so that will be um from Summerfield and then heading east, and basically, we're gonna get as far as we can. I would like to say we'll get to the high school, but I don't think we'll quite make it with the money we have available. So we're putting together the bid package and we'll do it in kind of units so that we can get as much as we can for the money we have available.
The goal is to try to get to the high school?
Yes, so if we don't complete it all this year, then we'd look to complete it next year, next year's program. And I I just wanted to um celebrate all that we're doing about the Fano Creek Trail. This is such an important asset to the city. I I really think it's a very special thing about the city is our our green spaces and our regional trail system. And there's a lot going on, so I kind of just made a quick list of all the things we're working on. And um I just started at, you know, kind of the upstream into the system and worked down. I I think a lot of folks get the emails and phone calls about the flooding of the Fano Creek Trail. That is a regular problem at Shoals Ferry. And uh where it's, the road crossing uh over the creek is low. There's not a lot of room to somehow add, y- you know, just fill and keep raising the trail because you'd be bumping your head against the bridge. And um there's, Clean Water Services is working to manage the beavers, but it's it's really tough. So we're working right now with partners to see if we can scope a s- potential signalized crossing um at grade of Shoals Ferry. So we're gonna figure out what that might involve, what might be permissible, what the cost might be, and then we could start looking for funding for that.
Would it, would it be similar to the one that's already crossing um Hall further up?
Yes, in Beaverton. Yeah, it might be.
Yeah, we'd push it and the lights and-
Probably, yeah.
Yeah. Wha- and what, and it probably wouldn't work. What about with um putting that kind of wall in there that when that water got up, would that would do, would that help at all on the trail? Or would that be too tall and too long of a wall to prevent the water from flooding over the trail?
The problem with putting in a wall is when you're reducing the capacity of the underpass to pass creek flows, so y- um you'd be causing problems upstream by backing up flow.
Okay.
Um, y-
Creating other erosion basically somewhere else?
You'd be, yes, you'd be creating problems elsewhere by doing that. Um also, it's really not a solution that would be permitted by the um Natural Resources permitting agencies. Um, but all these other things going along along the trail are are really pretty awesome. So I mentioned the Camus Festival, and we're gonna celebrate all these things. So at Dirksen Nature Park on April twenty-seventh, we'll have a variety of activities for um uh everybody to enjoy, uh both at the uh new covered structure and the new nature play area, but also throughout the trail system there. And there will be different places to stop and and learn and enjoy about the different elements of Dirksen Nature Park, which really is a special place. Um, and there will also be places where people can learn about other projects, like the the Fano Creek Trail projects that are being designed and to get input on those. And let's see. If we have a minute, I can ju- oh, poor Carla, that's a terrible picture. I wonder if I can, um, if I press the button, if the quick video will play so that Carla will stop looking like that. Oh, it's not. Do you think, Carol, maybe you need to push it? No? Shoot. This is actually a video, and and Carla doesn't look like that all the time. Let's see if we can get it to play. 'Cause w- uh we've created uh three really cool videos um about Dirksen, and this one is about the Camus, if we can get it to play. Play it on my computer, I didn't think about it up on this screen. Can you just click on her?
Can you click on the picture?
Oh, I'm so disappointed. Okay. Darn the technology. Okay. Uh, that's on the city's YouTube channel, and I think very soon it will be, if you um went on the city's website and typed typed in um Dirksen, I think it would come up. So there there are three videos that have been created. So one's about the Camus and the importance of the the Camus flowers to the Native Americans, and how as we cleared out the oak savanna, we cleared out all of the blackberries, there was an amazing surprise of how much native Camus bulbs were in there, and that's why we're having such beautiful blooms in the spring, just the whole place turns blue. Uh, there's another video about kind of the whole Dirksen Nature Park Master Plan that's being implemented. And then there's a third one that's really special to our hearts in Public Works because it's about, I get the last presentation I made, I I mentioned the um ferry doors that are being installed in the nature park, and those are um a tribute to a lost colleague who used to build those kinds of things for the neighborhood kids. And um there's a a woodworker out there, if you haven't been out there, it's really awesome, and he's been working on all these uh sequoia logs and then installing all these little doors, and uh it's, it's really incredible, so I encourage people to go.
Just this one, um, quick, it's the the trail, Fano Creek Trail, the part that goes to Woodard Park.
Mm-hmm.
Wh- what did you say the timeline was that gonna be for that to be completed?
So it's it's at thirty percent design, so there's a possibility it could be under construction, not this summer, but the following summer. Um, so I'm hopeful for that. If not, it would be the following summer.
Okay, I'm just asking, 'cause I know other things can get done, but that's just kind of the one, the last piece of that whole section, it seems.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it's very exciting.
Yeah.
Counselor, any questions, comments?
Thank you.
Very, very thorough today. Thank you. In a great way. I appreciate, yeah, no, that was not, I, it was much appreciated. I mean, these are, some of these, you know, we 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 see them as one line on a presentation, and to your team and to the impact to the community, they're huge. Um, and so I think it, I think it's worth the conversation and us really understanding and and keeping apprised of where the projects are at, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. That was our last uh agenda item. We have no executive session scheduled. I would take a motion for adjournment if someone wants to make one.
Can move for adjournment?
Is there a second?
I have a second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? No, I'm saying we're done. Any opposed? No, I'm saying we're done.[1310.98][1313.31][music]